I would like to call the meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oregon City Commission, and today is Wednesday, August the 19th. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
James Nacita, Commissioner.
Attorney Attorney Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
And would you please stand and join me in the flag salute? Thank you. As we are still celebrating Oregon's 150th birthday, our part here in Oregon City is to have a sesquicentennial moment where we dredge up rare and interesting facts about our fairest city. So this evening, there are first, a few facts of, a few first facts of our Oregon City. And the first fact is that the first elected mayor of Oregon City was Asa Lovejoy in 1846. Dr. McLaughlin was not elected until 1851. The first chief of police was named in 1892. Before that, they were called marshals. The first fire chief was as late as 1903. The first city attorney in 1860. The first city engineer, 1897. The superintendent of roads and streets. Have you served that long, Ed?
Wow.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I had no idea.
Holding up well.
It's time for him to go.
Superintendent of roads and streets was in 1853, and it was changed to street commissioner in 1861. The first city recorder was 1850, and in 1924, the commission form of government was established. Before that, it was called wards and councilmen. And in 1925, we had our first city manager. Now, there you have it, your sesquicentennial moments. Next is a pleasure always to administer the oath of office to a new reserve police officer. This is for Officer Ross Horton, and to help with that will be our Lieutenant Lisa Nunes. I want to welcome Ross Horton to our reserve staff. We love the part that when we steal reserves from other people. He is a Clackamas County Reserve. He went through my reserve academy last year, 2008, 2009, and graduated, went to county for a little bit, but we told him, "We're better, so come over here." So he graduated from Cambie Union High School, and he currently works down at the courthouse as one of those security people that you have to go through to get to the court, so. Great, we're glad to have you here. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ross Horton, do solemnly swear that I will uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon. I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics and the department's rules and regulations while faithfully performing my duties as a reserve police officer for Oregon City, Oregon. Thank you, welcome aboard. If you've come to speak to us on an item that's not on the agenda, please, well, either way, fill out a card, but under this particular item. And you have up to three minutes to talk to us. So first, Marcy Barrett and fellow that Christine Kozinski.
Marcy Barrett, City of Oregon City. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We are here again this evening, and we'll be here at every council meeting to update you on the progress, or lack of, I should say, our bargaining process with the city. On July 31st, the city's council, Bruce Bischoff, requested that the union submit a final proposal in hopes to settle without moving on to mediation. On August 3rd, the union submitted a pared-down proposal to the city via email to Mr. Bischoff. The union was assured we would get a quick response. Stacy Chamberlain, our union representative, emailed Mr. Bischoff on several occasions since August 3rd, inquiring on the status of the review of the proposal, and received no response. Ironically, today, at 12:17 PM, we received a response from the city via email through their council, Mr. Bischoff, which we feel was intended to deter us from coming to the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, the response we received confused our negotiation team even more than we already are. Mr. Bischoff made it clear in the city's response that they have no intention of working through this anymore, and wants to continue on to mediation, and quote, "Hopes the mediator can assist us in crafting language to address these issues." On one hand, Mr. Bischoff is admitting in his email that we are extremely close on several of the issues, but then goes on to list issues that we are not aware were even issues. For example, sick leave, holidays, deferred compensation. We are extremely disappointed with the stance the city's management team is taking. Myself and two other members here tonight have negotiated three previous union contracts with the city and have never experienced this kind of regressive bargaining and lack of good faith. Because of these actions, the union has been forced to file an unfair labor practice complaint with the Employment Relations Board. Ask-me Council is preparing the paperwork, and the complaint will be filed this Friday, August 21st. I would be happy to provide you with copies of the unfair labor practice complaint, our union proposals from the beginning of bargaining, the city's counter proposals, the city's first proposal on July 20th, and their amended proposal on July 20th where they attempted to cover up the various regressive bargaining proposals they previously submitted. Since bargaining ceased on July 20th and our attendance at the last commission meeting, some union members feel retaliated against my management. In one case, we were forced to file a grievance. The majority of our members are frontline employees who are subjected to criticism on a daily basis. It is very discouraging that a few managers have resorted to this type of behavior. Again, we thank you for your time and listening to our concerns. The union is looking forward to a quick and fair resolution to the situation.
I want to ask Ms. Barrett a question.
Commissioner Nacita.
Could you go over your timeline again?
The timeline of when they asked us for the final proposal?
No, the complete timeline that you commenced with.
Okay. On July 31st, the city's council, you know, Bruce Bischoff, requested that the union submit a final proposal in hopes to settle without moving on to mediation. On August 3rd, that was a Friday, and August 3rd, the union submitted a pared-down proposal to the city via email to Mr. Bischoff, and he assured us we would get a quick response. Stacy emailed him, I'm going to say at least three to five times between now, between then, and today, inquiring on the status of the review. And I can get you those exact dates, I was trying to speed things up. And received no response. But ironically, today, we got a response.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And the next up after Christine will be Kathy Hogan.
More the mayor.
Makes it easy.
Christine Kozinski, Anna Incorporated, Clackamas County. Mayor Norris and Commissioner, may I have your approval to give a public service announcement regarding the Clackamas County September 8th meeting on urban rural reserves?
Sure.
For the community that's watching by television, I'd like to let you know that Clackamas County has been working on the next 40 to 50 years of land supply, and some of the lands may be designated as urban reserves, rural reserves, or possibly may stay the same way. There will be a meeting where the public can bring their comments. It will be on, it will be at 6 o'clock on Tuesday, September 8th, in the Public Services Building, on the fourth floor, in the hearing room, at 2051 Kane Road in Oregon City. This is a wonderful meeting for you to come to and have your comments heard. The Board of County Commissioners will be there for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Kathy Hogan. Two things, Philistalk and Philheart, you know, I always plug it as much as I can. Thank you, Rocky, for the teddy bears. We have lots of them for all the children and people. And we are still, can use material, there's a box there with a logo for our material to make the stockings out of. And we've got about 3,000 socks just about made, and probably 350 already filled, so we've been working on it. It's a year-round project, so I just wanted them to know that, get prepared, I might come again in October and say, "We're really pushing now." And then, the last thing is the Hazel Grove Westland Farm Neighborhood Association in South End will meet September 17th at 7 o'clock at the Methodist Church, South End Road. And we have B&amp;B leasing, actually Clackamas County, coming to give us a little talk on proper way to use the recycling bins. And so I'd like to get it on for the public to know, so that our neighborhood association will have a good show for the speaker that comes.
Okay, September 17th, 7 PM. Thank you. All right, let's move on then to adoption of the agenda. We do have one item that's been pulled from the agenda, and that is 7B, the bid award for Polkum Boulevard. So please pull 7B on your agendas. Are there any others that anyone else wishes to have reordered? Not? We'll take the agenda in the order in which it is listed. Actually, before we do that, I've received some correspondence, which, I've never read correspondence, but this was way too interesting. It comes from Vatican City. "To the Honorable Alice Norris, how kind of you to write a letter of congratulations on my Episcopal ordination just a month ago today. Cardinal Levada suggested Oregon City for my titular seat, and I was delighted, not only for its great historic importance, but also because I love the Northwest. I visited Portland several times when the Archbishop Levada was there, and I certainly hope to visit Oregon City sometime. Fondness regards." J. Augustine DeNoye, I forgot how you say his name, DeNoya, I think. DeNoya?
DeNoya.
You're correct, okay. Anyway, if anyone else to see the Vatican seal, here it is. That was nice. All right, now, moving on to the first item on business, and that is a public hearing on ordinance 9-1005, which amends our city's comp plan and zoning map by approving a four-lot subdivision for a property within Caulfield Place subdivision. And Tony Conkle, are you the staff on this?
I will be tonight, yes.
All right, thank you. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We're presenting the staff report and findings from the planning commission concerning the requested comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential to high-density residential, and a zone change from R10 single-family to R2 single-family for the tax lot 9800. And then, if the comp plan amendment and zone change are approved, the applicant is also requesting a four-lot subdivision zoned R2 multifamily. The property is identified as three south, two east, nine CC tax lots, 9800 and 9890. It's located within what was originally the Caulfield Place subdivision. It was a 94-lot subdivision that's zoned, 89 lots are zoned R2, and five lots are zoned R10. The property is located on the north end of the bowl at the intersections of Travelers and Settlement. The access into the subdivision and the site is via the stoplight at the intersection of Caulfield and Highway 213. As you can see, the properties surrounding the subject site are zoned R2. Directly north of the subject site is the Oregon City Stormwater Treatment Facility that was constructed as part of the Caulfield Place subdivision. North of that is outside the urban growth boundary. 9800, tax lot 9800, which, this is the original Caulfield Place plat. The subdivision name subsequently has been changed to Ryan Park. The original plat, when we went through the land use process on the review of the subdivision, there was a need for, there was a potential need for a new sanitary sewer pump station. Once we got into the construction review and design for the development, we were able to utilize the existing pump station directly north of the site, so the construction and improvements to that pump station were made, leaving the need for Track D to be set aside for a future pump station. Subsequently, the applicant has performed a lotline adjustment between Track D, as it was platted, and the stormwater tract behind it to pick up a little additional property. And once that occurred, and the plat recorded, they were given tax lot numbers of 9800 and 9890. 9800 is the actual split-zone property. Approximately 2,270 feet of it are, have a comprehensive plan amendment of low-density residential, zoned R10. The remaining approximately 1,200 square feet of that tax lot are zoned high-density residential and zoned R2 multifamily. Tax lot 9890, which is in front of this parcel, or the tract, is zoned R2. So the applicant is requesting the comp plan amendment and the zone change on tax lot 9800. The proposed four-lot subdivision, when we went through and looked at our subdivision code, all the improvements were made when the Caulfield Place subdivision was constructed. The roads, stormwater, sanitary sewer water were all constructed to city design standards, and there was enough capacity to support the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change as well as the four-lot subdivision. In the original application for the subdivision, we did a water quality resource review of the property. We did not require an additional water quality report with this application because the applicant stayed outside of the buffers that were approved under that original land use application. They weren't proposing to infringe into that buffer area that was approved through the previous land use decision. The applicant has proposed an average lot size.
Tony, if I may.
Commissioner Nacita.
I just wanted to make a quick question then. There is a water resources report in here.
Correct.
So is this the one that was submitted with that larger project previously?
In 2006, correct. Yes.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I was really confused about that.
Please continue.
The applicant has proposed four lots as part of the subdivision. The average lot size is 2,064, which exceeds the minimum requirement of 2,000 square feet. They range in size from 1,800 square foot to approximately 2,392 square feet. Through the subdivision process, you are allowed to reduce the lot size within a subdivision by 10 percent. Thereby, that 1,800 square foot lot is compliant with Oregon City Code requirements, as long as the average of the total subdivision meets or exceeds 2,000 square feet, which it does in this case. As part of the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change criteria, the applicant needs to demonstrate that there's adequate public services available to serve the site. As I stated earlier, all the public improvements have already been made. When they went through the land use process, they recorded the plat, they actually completed the construction of the site, and all those improvements were, are in place, and there is adequate capacity to serve the proposed comp plan amendment to account for that increased density, as well as to serve the four-lot subdivision. The comprehensive plan map or zoning change requires compliance with the Oregon City Municipal Code and the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan. When you walk through, when you look at the comprehensive plan, it meets those goals and policies concerning efficient use of land use, compatibility with surrounding land uses. It's also located within close proximity to Clackamas Community College and Highway 213, both of which serve public transportation options. And with the proximity to Clackamas Community College, you have recreational, educational opportunities centrally located to the site. As part of the original Caulfield Place subdivision, we, through conditions of approval, we acquired an easement across the property connecting the subject site, and it actually extends to the west boundary of the site, an easement for a public pedestrian bike path that would continue along the south side of Tewes Pond, connecting up to 213. So we do have that easement in place on the recorded plat to be constructed at a later date, once we have funding to improve that, which would provide alternative modes of transportation to get from the site to 213 and to Clackamas Community College and other areas within the city down there. We did not require an additional transportation report. So the transportation report that you received in your packet was also from the original subdivision. And why we did this was that the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and zone change is very minor in the four-lot subdivision. When the original subdivision was reviewed, they, in their transportation report, accounted for more dwelling units than were actually constructed on the site. So they overanalyzed the site based on what they developed. They constructed 15 less units than they utilized in their transportation report. They're adding four additional units here, so there were still 11 units short of what they utilized in the transportation report. And in that transportation report, they were required to look at the existing conditions on the site, the level of service for the intersections that we studied, if the development was constructed with the lots and without the lots. And in each situation, at full buildout, all the level of service standards at our intersections were being met. The worst level of service was a level of service C. The addition of the four lots and the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change will have no significant impact on the transportation system nor the level of service at those As you can see on this slide, what we're showing is the proposed layout of the subdivision. Once the plat's recorded, the lotline adjustments, the lotlines will be adjusted to reflect this proposed plat. The striped hatched area on the north side is the area where we're requesting the comprehensive plan map amendment and the zone change. The remainder of this side, as we stated earlier, is already zoned R2. The planning commission heard this at their August 10th hearing. They did not have any additional comments or conditions of approval, other than those recommended by staff. It was a 5-0 recommendation of approval to the city commission for their consideration to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial land use hearing, and we will abide by the rules and regulations set out in Oregon State statutes as well as Oregon City Code. And I will ask our attorney to read us the regulations under which we are governed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is, as was stated, a quasi-judicial hearing, and therefore, there are two items that I have to disclose to the public. First of all, the decision is based on the criteria, which are set forth in the staff report. If anybody wishes those criteria to be read, I'd be thrilled to do so. If there's anybody, if there's any other criteria that somebody thinks is applicable, they must raise that criterion with sufficient specificity to allow other parties and you as the decision-making body an opportunity to understand and deal with that criterion. Failure to raise an issue with such sufficient specificity will preclude raising that issue for the first time before the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Secondly, in the event that you do consider conditions, the applicant must consider any challenge to be raised to those conditions at this hearing, or the applicant has waived the opportunity to bring a damages suit in circuit court or raise the issue to Luba. I take it that the commission has not had any ex-party contacts on this matter?
No.
Looking at all heads nodding negatively, and that all of you can, have no, you have no monetary or other influence that might dissuade you from rendering a fair decision? I see all negative heads again, so you may proceed.
Thank you. So we've had the staff report, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions, then I will open the public hearing. The applicant will have an opportunity to present the case. Then we will, the public then has a chance to respond, as well as organized neighborhood associations. Then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, close the public hearing, and then the commission will deliberate and make a decision this evening. So with that, are there any questions of Mr. Conkle at this time, or should we go into the public hearing?
No, I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Neely.
On the slide we reserved for a pump station, how was that pump station originally thought to function? That is, you selected a different place, different pump station. How was the, how was the original pump station thought to function?
In terms of, it was going to collect the sanitary from the 94-lot subdivision and pump it back towards 213.
Yes.
So when we got into the construction review, we determined that we were able to take the sanitary north to the existing pump station on the other side, do upgrades to that pump station in order to pump it out to Myers Road.
That's what I understood, thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you, Tony. I will open the public hearing. And just to remind you that when you come to the microphone, please state your name and the county or the city in which you live, and then you have an opportunity to address us. The applicant, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Norris and Members of the Commission. My name is Chris Goodeell, G-O-O-D-E-L-L. My address is 13910.
You just need to give the city in which you live.
Okay. Sherwood, Oregon.
Okay.
The applicant property owner is Ryan Park Development Incorporated. They were also the applicant property owner for the surrounding Caulfield Place subdivision. For a small project, we put a lot of work into this, and we've got a lot of help from city staff, and want to thank them for that. We appreciate all their help. We believe the project's appropriate for the property. It's consistent with the surrounding approved development, and it's positioned to provide infill development, which is a goal of the city comprehensive plan. We've reviewed the staff report and concur with the recommended action, as well as the conditions of approval that are in it. We presented the application before the planning commission last week and received a unanimous recommendation for approval. We'd like to thank you for your time this evening, and I also ask for your approval of the application, subject to the recommendation. We're here tonight to answer any questions that you may have of us as the applicant.
Do you have any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, as an opportunity for the public, I have two who've signed up, Christine Kozinski and Kathy Hogan.
Christine Kozinski, Anna Incorporated, Clackamas County. I'm not pro or con on this development, but I have some questions and some concerns. Is this the area that recently had a left-turn lane added to it because of traffic congestion?
Why don't you list your questions, and we'll get them all together.
Okay. I realize that adding four units is not going to make a big impact on traffic. My concerns were not for now, but for the future, if this kind of continued development happened in the area. I also wondered if there was a park or a playground on that side of the street without people having to cross Beaver Creek, which is a very difficult street to cross. And I'm concerned about the 2,000 square foot lots. I thought there was an amendment change from the city that there would be no more 2,000 square foot lots. And I know, Madam Mayor, that you said a couple of years ago, Oregon City wouldn't be building any more Sequoia crossings, and I'm hoping that the city won't continue to build a tremendous amount of 2,000 square foot lots. And I wondered if the Caulfield neighborhood was notified about this. Thank you.
Kathy Hogan, Oregon City County resident. I just would say that I agree with Christine that the 2,000 lots are kind of, it's really getting small. So I'm wondering, are these really going to be, end up just being rentals, so that the care for them aren't going to be the same as somebody that's going to purchase them, because they are so small. And I agree with what the question she had asked, would like to know the answers also.
Okay, thank you. I have no more indication that anyone else has come to speak this evening? If so, the applicant has an opportunity for a rebuttal or to answer the questions?
I'm Monty Hurley with AKS Engineering also in Sherwood. I'm not, I'm going to try to address the turn lane comment. I'm not exactly certain what that was referring to, but I assume it's referring to the project on Oregon Highway 213, where ODOT's doing some improvements, and they've done some improvements to the intersection of improvements to the intersection of Beaver Creek, or not, excuse me, Caulfield-Glen Oak Road and Oregon 213. And they've done some widening in there, and they've done some enhancement to the turn lanes. I'm not, that was an ODOT project, it wasn't related to anything we were doing here. I don't think it would have a significant impact. If anything, it would have a positive impact over what the traffic study already represented. And then, do you want to?
With respect to the playground, there are two, well, there's several open space tracks. There are two large open space tracks, Track A and Track B of Caulfield Place, that will be available for recreational use. 2,000-square-foot lots-
Would those be developed or just open space, did you say?
They're going to be improved as areas for like ball fields, grass area. With respect to the 2,000-square-foot lots, that was, that's the standard that was in place under the time when we applied for the application. That was as far as the R2 district. So that was what was allowed, and that's what we applied for. So I think there's a more recent code change that may have changed that. Tony might, will know a little bit about that. As far as rentals, there's four finished townhouses, and three out of the four have sold, so those are owner, people have bought them. They're not condos where, or apartments that are strictly rental, these are home ownership As far as the notification, we, it's my understanding, at least, I think it still is, Caulfield Neighborhood Association is currently inactive. So we sent out a notice to three, the surrounding property owners within 300 feet, and had a neighborhood meeting for those people, and actually, nobody, nobody showed up.
I believe we have that documentation in our, in our packet.
But it was advertising, and anybody was welcome to come. I think that addresses the concerns that were issued. Is there, do you have any other questions, or is it something?
That's the questions I saw. So if you have closing remarks, why feel free at this time to state those.
Just again, that we feel that the project as proposed is consistent with the surrounding approved development. It appears exactly the same as these other lots that are in here. It could have been done at the time the original subdivision application was done, if not for the consideration it was going to be a pump station at that time. That issue with city's help was resolved to involve a different use of a different pump station, so this, this area here has no other use. So we think that the appropriate use is to do what, what we proposed here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
If there are no further speakers, I will close the public hearing. Now is an opportunity for the commission to deliberate. Let's see, were there any questions of Tony? Did you have any comments on any of those questions at this point? Sure, please.
Concerning a left-turn lane, not exactly which one, there are improvements being made by ODOT in vicinity of the site. The left turn off Caulfield onto 213 has been found to operate acceptably per the transportation study that was submitted. Concerning parks, as the applicant stated, there's several areas of open space underneath the power line. You have Tous Pond, large existing natural open space. These areas are not developed.
And will not be.
And will not be, correct. They're under the, there's BPA lines that go through there, and they're, BPA has extremely large buffers easements, 250-foot easements, I believe off the top of my head, even though the lines are not nearly that wide. So there's large amounts of areas on the other side of that that will not be developed because they are located within that easement. Concerning, that also addresses the parks. There's also, as you're well aware, we did purchase property east of Glen Oak Road in the vicinity of this, and the nearest developed one currently is West Lynn Park to the site. 2,000-square-foot lots are allowed, per the code. The new zoning code that the commission adopted when it affected July 31st, the applicant submitted well before that. If they submitted on August 1st, the ability to do subdivisions would not have been an option, but the applicant is entitled to the code criteria in place on the date they submitted their application. Caulfield Neighborhood Association was notified. I sent the mailing to them with the application. I also sent an email to the CIC members of this notice for the public hearing for the planning commission on this. So the noticing did occur to the neighborhood association. The project's property site was posted with a land use sign. The application and hearing dates were noticed in the paper, and neighbors within 300 feet were notified of the application and the hearing dates. And concerning rental versus home ownership, ownership of property is not a land use approval criteria. It's just, we don't address it. It's up to the private property owner how they want to utilize their property.
Okay. Could you please explain what the conditions would be under the new code? And I know that that-
Under the new code in the R2 zone, we do not allow subdivisions. So in this case, the applicant is proposing, in this application, so we would have this lot right here, as proposed.
We'd not be able to be divided.
So the applicant is proposing four lots, and it's going to have one building on it, a four-unit attached townhouse, but they're going to be single, they're going to be owned by each individual property owner. Under the new code, you could build the exact same building, but you wouldn't be able to create parcels or lots. So you could create, you could construct the exact same building, but it would have to be either in a condo form or an apartment. So you'd have the exact same product, it's just the ownership would be one versus four.
Thank you. Okay, are there other questions of Tony, or do you wish to move toward deliberation on this proposal? Commissioner Neely?
Let me make a comment regarding Christine Kaczynski's comments. One of the ways we try to avoid urban sprawl is to increase density within our current cities, and we really run into a conflict where, in order to preserve our rural areas and so forth, if in fact we have the same kind of high densities that we experienced probably about 30 years ago, we would have lost a lot of our area compared to what the situation is now. And I know there are various objections, but one of the things is, it does have a tendency to make housing more affordable in the process, in the urban setting. And it also reduces the need of the municipalities to actually increase their footprint outside of the current boundaries. That's one comment. I will, but I'll just wait for, I've got another comment.
Much, go ahead. You got, you got the floor.
When this development was put forward, the understanding I had was there was going to be a sewer connection to Highway 213. What happened instead was, decision was made to go ahead and extend the sewer connection to a sewer service that was on the other side of Caulfield Creek. A sewer pipe was extended across the creek, is uncovered, is unsightly. We still got this property that in fact is designated originally for a pump station. I would hope that someday in the future, we will correct that mistake, either by developing agreements with adjacent property owners to put a pedestrian, pedestrian bicycle bridge over that exposed sewer pipe, or to redirect the water to Highway 213. I'm not in favor of the change of use. I think it was a design decision that was a mistake. It was not what I understood was going to happen when this development first came on.
And I agree. Are there other comments or questions? Commissioner Nocita?
Couple of things, I want to begin by clarifying. We're not voting tonight, right?
Yes.
Because there's a second reading of this?
No, you're voting.
Yeah, this is an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, so you have to go through two readings.
Yes, so this is meeting a next one.
Right, but do we vote on each one?
Yes.
What if you do a first reading tonight?
Got it, okay. So I, this may just be the point at which a lot of my learning curve and concerns come together in one evening, and I'm still on the learning curve, even after six months, I will be the first to admit that. But I'm beginning to have some concerns about the way we treat land use applications. And one of my concerns relates to the criteria that we do or do not require a respondent to, adhered to, and provide findings on. And I may be going back in the Wayback Machine here to the fall of 2002, or the spring of 2002, when Mr. Sullivan was not my city attorney, but my professor. But I want to raise one of the points that I think we are not particularly adhering to, and I bet even Mr. Sullivan wrote this, so we can probably get his insight and wisdom on it. Huh?
Such as it is.
One of, one of the component decisions is, we're doing a comp plan amendment, but we're also doing a subdivision, so this does involve a subdivision permit application. And I'm going to read from ORS 227.173. It says, "Approval or denial of a discretionary permit application shall be based on standards and criteria which shall be set forth in the development ordinance and which shall relate approval or denial of a discretionary permit application to the development ordinance and to the comprehensive plan for the area in which the development would occur, and to the development ordinance and comprehensive plan for the city as a whole." I read this statute as saying that for a subdivision, which is a discretionary permit, an applicant and we must make findings not only to our zoning ordinance, but to our comprehensive plan as well. And we don't do that. And I know there are probably other cities that don't do that, but I have in the past, you know, when I was on that side of the, out of the dais. I have, in several jurisdictions, written factual, you know, findings on both comp plan provisions and on zoning ordinance provisions. And I'm concerned that we don't require that here in Oregon City.
If I may respond, Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
I was there when the original language was written. It's been modified to some extent without the statute itself being modified by ORS 197195 sub 1. And that says that subdivisions and partitions within urban growth boundaries are limited land use decisions that do not have to address the comprehensive plan.
Okay. So do we have a-
So it does have to address-
Do we have a statutory conflict between these two?
You do, and I think the later one probably prevails. I fought that last one, lost that battle, but I think it, what it means is that the plan does not have to be addressed in individual subdivision or partition applications.
Okay. Having said that, I would say that I'm also concerned that, and I know this is part of the process where people can come in and comment on this, but even in a, in a comp plan and zoning ordinance change-
Yes.
-we have to address the comp plan provisions.
You do.
And I'm not sure all of the comp plan provisions that are relevant to this have For example, I mean, this is my two-trick pony issue.
Which page are you on?
Well, I'm actually on the AKS Engineering application, page 16 of 17, but I would also Okay. This is our factual findings, page 16, Goal 6, air, quality of air, land, water and land resources. One goal within Goal 6, Goal 6.11, is, there are findings of fact in the staff report just for Goal 6.11, but there are other goals within that section that aren't even addressed. And this, this one particularly, this one relates to trails, et cetera, but, you know, even a small four-lot subdivision is going to, you know, generate stormwater discharge, and it's going to generate, you know, sewage discharge. And I think a lot of, you know, perhaps, I don't know, but perhaps some of Commissioner Neely's concerns would be addressed precisely by the process of, you know, making finding against the policies and provisions that are in our comprehensive plan. And Goal 6, one of them, of course, is water quality. This, this set of findings states nothing under the Goal 6 provision dealing with water quality or air quality, for that matter. It seems strictly to address trails, which probably falls under land resources, but, you know, there are other, there are other policies and provisions under Goal 6 of our comprehensive plan that are not addressed here. And I, you know, I don't know, my raising this now, you know, I think is blindsiding, you know, the applicants here, and I don't want to vote no on this based on that. But I, I think, you know, it is fair me to raise the flag right now and say that in the future, I mean, I could vote no on, you know, development proposals that I don't feel have properly addressed either media cover provisions or, or, you know, depending on the issue, a comp plan or zone change provision. And I have another, I've already expressed this concern, as it related to the Cove project, and I raised this in the Urban Renewal Commission meeting, that especially as it relates to the water resources overly, I just don't think that, I'm not even sure we're, you know, in the ballpark on how we comply with that provision to satisfy our title requirements. And, I mean, I don't mean to be critical, but it is, it is a concern. So that's, that's where I'm kind of, let me, if you don't mind, you have the water quality resource in front of you, the report? Can you, can you turn to figure nine? Yeah, it's the last one on the packet.
Last one, we pulled it over pages.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got it.
Okay, we've got it.
Thank you. Yes, you'll see on the, on the legend on the left-hand side, it gives the symbol for trees that are going, that are six inches diameter, breast height, to be removed. And obviously, you can see some of them are within the subdivisions. Some of them, for example, are within the buffer boundary of the water quality resource Unless I'm, unless it's just not clear to me, because these are jumbled together, but it seems that just north of the dashed line, there's a little clump where there are some trees within the water quality resource area that are designated for removal. And I don't know why we would be removing trees within the water quality resource area. I mean, on a small subdivision, obviously, you're in a half concerns, but it just seems from this drawing, we are actually removing trees that are within the buffer. And if it's not clear, I mean, that's for our percipuses of review, I think that needs to be, you know, made more clear in applications like this.
Okay, a couple of questions. Let's have legal review first, and then Tony can go in.
Okay. What I heard, and Commissioner Nocita, you correct me if I get it wrong, is that you have three particular concerns. One is the quality of the findings under one of the city plan policies.
Not the quality- Not the quality of the findings, but whether they, yeah, there are certain policies...
Addressing the trail, but not other things that are covered by that city goal.
And that's just, yeah, and that's just illustrative.
And I understand.
Okay.
The second one, I got a concern over the water quality report, but unless you articulated it more fully in what you just said, I don't understand it. If the elaboration on that concern was what you just said about the trees being removed, I understand that. If there's more, then I need to hear more.
It was kind of two-part, because one was, it seems that there are trees designated within the water quality resource area for, yeah, for removal.
Right. I heard that.
It's not clear from the legend whether there's like a tree with an X through it, because some of the trees in the water quality resource are denoted without X's, but it seems in that little clump next to the boundary, it's just not clear enough from the map whether that's happening or not.
You might have staff respond to that, and if we are getting into factual matters, then you might reopen the hearing and let the parties' objectors as well as the applicant respond to it.
Well, it wouldn't be an issue here, because this was done in 2006, so I don't think it's germane to the current application.
Well, let's hear, let's hear from Tony.
The trees shown for removal on the north side of Track D, as you can see on the plat right here, this track back here is the stormwater pond. Stormwater ponds are allowed to encroach 25 feet to a water quality resource area boundary, provided mitigation is proposed. The applicant has done substantial mitigation to that site. They fenced off all areas, protected all trees that they've identified for protection. They went in, removed all the invasives, have been on the management plan and replanted with deciduous coniferous and several plant species. So when we put a tract in for public stormwater, A, the applicant is allowed to encroach into the water quality resource area, provided mitigation is done. And then B, per our code, trees located in public accessways, public easements, public utility easements, building frontments are allowed to be removed in order to put that utility in without any mitigation. So yes, those trees were designated for removal because we had to get a stormwater tract in there to accommodate the stormwater quality that's being generated from the public streets as part of this project. And that does go back to addressing, you know, I think this is something we can certainly discuss at a work session concerning, you know, if the commission would like to see every goal and policy in the comprehensive plan addressed by an applicant and staff. And when it's not applicable, they just mark not applicable so that you can make that decision if it is or not. There's, you know, we go through and try and identify the goals and policies that we think are applicable to what's being proposed by the applicant. You know, in response, throughout the staff report, we made findings that the stormwater pond that was constructed had adequate capacity and was designed to city standards to accommodate the stormwater from the site. And those, that does quality for detention as well as water quality, and it's released at a rate per our design standards. And so the thought process there is that if we're treating it to our city standard, that it is a benefit to the system. We're not dumping stormwater straight into a wetland or a creek. We're treating it, detaining it as required per our code. So it's hard to address that policy because it's designed to our standard. I don't know what other standard we would use to make finding concerning that.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just, if I may, is the tree removal issue that Commissioner Nacita raised articulated elsewhere in the findings or in the staff reports?
We didn't address tree removal, because the applicant is not proposing any tree removal as part of this four-lot subdivision.
Okay. So the objection or the concern that was raised?
Well, was it raised in 2006 with the original plan?
The applicant submitted a tree inventory of the site and then identified which trees are going to be removed, and then submitted a mitigation plan as part of that subdivision per our code to address...
So was I reading this map, Figure 9, correctly, that clump of trees, not within Track D as denoted?
Correct, just north of it.
But just north of the boundary line?
Correct.
Those were removed, that those did have the little X through it?
Correct.
Okay.
And if you look, you see the north line of Track D?
Yes.
You see the property line?
Yes.
And then if you follow that to the east corner, you see another property line going north on an angle to the dashed property line?
Mm-hmm.
That's all the stormwater tract. So you have this large stormwater tract, and then you can see that stormwater line, and then it extends running parallel to the north property line to the stormwater outfall. So you had to get in there and remove those trees in order to get the stormwater facility in there and get it to an appropriate release point, to get the water back into the natural system.
I believe also, correct me if I'm wrong, that in the giant fold-out that we have of papers, that the new landscape plan is included? It's the last page? Is that the big fold-out, not this, yeah, that one? Which I didn't bring tonight, but it's the last page or the next to the last page? I believe it's called landscape. I don't know whether that addresses any... Right. So maybe explain what that is.
Right. So this, Page 9, and you do have small cut, which are, you know, you'll go blind trying to read the small ones.
Okay.
So this shows the existing landscaping that was provided by the applicant under the original approval as part of the mitigation and the plantings for the water quality resource area and the storm pond. So this is what has been planted on the site. And then it also shows the street trees along the right-of-way on the south side of the subject site.
So in lots 95, 96, 97, and 98, there are designated some trees at the top of these lots. Those are new trees to be planted?
That's been planted.
That they have been planted?
Yes. The plat's been recorded, all the construction, the public improvements were made. So all the landscaping out there has been done, and they've been doing their upkeep of that site since that construction was completed.
Further questions or comments?
What I would like to propose pursuant to Tony's suggestions is, and I've raised this parenthetically on a couple of occasions, we are going through another code revision for January.
Right.
And I've raised with a couple of folks that, you know, it might be an idea to have some work sessions on what that should include, and I'd like to add this topic to that.
Trees?
Well, the whole issue of what comp plan policies or, you know, municipal zoning ordinance provisions require findings in any land use applications submitted to the city.
So you can think about it, Madam Mayor.
Right, thank you.
197-195 says that if you do want to put plan policies as approval criteria, you have to specifically insert them in the code. So if you're thinking about that, then you should look at that at some future work session. The only countervailing thing, and I do have a concern myself, as your lawyer, is that there are the requirements for clear and objective standards when you're dealing with needed housing. And needed housing applies probably across the board for Oregon City residential uses. So there's a balance that we have to deal with, and either designate more land or have more clear and objective standards. I always worry, and I've worried publicly and staff knows this, about discretionary standards when you're dealing with residential uses, because we butt up against this other statute.
Okay.
We should have that work session before Mr. Sullivan goes on sabbatical.
We'll see.
He'll be back. Okay, back then to the criteria that concern us on this land use application. May I have a motion or more discussion, whichever is your...
No, I'm going to, I'm going to move to, how do you deny an ordinance?
What'd you say?
How do you deny an ordinance?
Why don't you have somebody put it up and then vote it down, if you're going to do it that way? You could also make a motion affirmatively to reject the proposal here.
I'm sorry, I intended to do...
Right.
Okay, I'm going to propose to reject this ordinance. I believe the current use of the current setting aside of this area for a wastewater pump station should be in effect until a pedestrian bridge is built across the exposed pipeline going across Coffey Oak Creek. And that is a trial motion that I'll let the attorney respond to.
I just have a few funny things to do here.
Is that an exaction?
No, here's my concern. If you set up findings and you set yourself up for an appeal on the findings, you are not required to do any plan amendments or zone changes. So you could either table it, you could reject it outright, or you could do something else, but please don't set yourself up with findings that might...
Thank you very much.
Might bite me.
Yes, I moved to deny.
Reject proposal ordinance 09-1005.
Yeah, I moved to reject ordinance number 09-1005.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second. May I have another motion, please?
I will move to...
Mr. Nacita?
I will move to approve the first reading of...
Ordinance 9.
Ordinance 9...
1005.
Thank you, may I have a second? I'll second the motion. Moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Mayor Norris. Is there further comments or discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Neely?
Since my motion's off the table, anyway. If there were efforts to address the concern I have, that I could be having a pedestrian bicycle bridge over that exposed sewer pipe, I would have had no problem with this. However, it is an eyesore. It's an eyesore, I think, for any residents that would live in that area. And I know there was reasons a pedestrian bridge wasn't built. That being the case, if they couldn't build a pedestrian bridge, they should have used the parcel for which it was intended originally. That is, to deliver the sewage up to Highway 213 and into that sewer system and not run it over a pipe that turned out to be exposed. My understanding is property owners on the other side of the Coffey Oak Creek that did not want to give up any easement for such a pedestrian right-of-way. In that case, the original plan should have gone forward for the pumping of the sewage.
Question for attorney.
Yes.
I'm just giving my reason for that.
No, no, I understand that.
I fully understand that.
Yes, no, I understand that.
I do have a concern, I want to make sure I get it out.
Yeah. Is that a criteria that could have been addressed tonight? It's not on the record, or is it...
I think you can, but here's my concern, and I'll be as honest as I can with you. I'm worried about an exaction issue, that the quid pro quo for getting the vote is something that is not related to the change of the use. And I do have a concern over that.
Okay.
And that's why I asked you not to do findings.
Can, yes, could we address that then, if it's on the table? Yes, thank you.
When we did the original application, we relied on the city's adopted Parks and Rec Master Plan for Trails. And we exacted from the applicant the trail identified on that master plan. We could certainly go back and amend the master plan to locate a path, as Commissioner Neely is describing. We have ownership. We have an easement along here, we have the ownership of the tract in the back. The property owner still has ownership of the remainder of Two's Pond. But approving this does not preclude the ability to achieve what Commissioner Neely is describing.
I would be very interested in looking at that as well.
Here's a suggestion. Since you've already heard new evidence, as I hear it from Commissioner Neely, about the person on the other side that's not in this record, since I also heard from Tony about some other things that could be done, you may want to both reopen or continue until you have five people.
Move to continue.
It's Ben.
Wait, there is already a motion on the floor, though.
Okay, withdraw.
So that would require the mayor to withdraw her... No, I made the motion.
No, you did, yes.
Well, let me take a straw poll. Is this where people want to go?
That's fine with me if it's not. Is there an urgency to this?
Are you guys under the gun for financing reasons or any issue like that? Okay, I will withdraw my motion.
Outside the record.
Right? What'd you say?
Outside the record.
Oh.
Strike that. I will withdraw my motion.
And I will withdraw my second.
Please hold for one.
Okay.
Can we hold for once?
Yes.
Are you worried about 120 days? Is the 120-day issue...
Not a comp plan amendment.
Do you need to have a break? No, you're fine with that?
Yep.
All right, Commissioner Neely, or...
He says withdraw his motion.
No, he did. Both, and the second has been withdrawn.
Till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
Yes, have a date certain. In a second, please. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith to move to continue this action at the September, no, September 2nd meeting. Is there any discussion on that?
Nancy, let me make a statement.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
The ex-party contact you referred to, it was actually from staff at a previous meeting, and I don't know if it was this one, that as to why that happened.
I didn't see it in the record, that's why I raised it.
Yeah.
Further comments? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes for zero. So we'll see this again next meeting.
Is the commission expecting anything from staff? I'm a little unclear as to what we're doing.
It sounded to me as if there's... Wait a minute, please. It sounded as if that, what we were requesting was a little bit more discussion about the possibilities and probabilities of Commissioner Neely's suggestion about the bridge and the open pipe.
And perhaps an amendment of the recreational plan?
And the amendment, yes, possibly, right.
But also that, since it wasn't done, there was no public hearing response to it over in Wisconsin.
Right. You understand that? Is that clear or not?
So it sounds like we're not producing any... Should we be talking with the applicant about? I'm not sure what directive I have at the moment.
I think this is exploratory.
It's going to be a reopened hearing, so anything new can...
Can introduce new.
So the applicant takes his advice at its peril and tries to work with staff and tries to get something before.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nacita?
Yeah, I just want to clarify too, before we move on to the next agenda item, that I'm appreciative that we're going to work on this issue of criteria, you know, in work sessions, but I do want to be on the record that, you know, I've given notice and I will scrutinize future land use applications from tonight for whether I feel or not, you know, all the applicable criteria have been addressed.
Yeah, I'd like to have a little more conversation about that, because it's the applicable criteria part that I'm uncertain about.
And I would like to participate if you are going to do that.
Yes, yes. I would like for us to have you there.
Which is precisely why I want to do this before the city attorney goes on sabbatical.
That may be possible, but, okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Item 7A, the revised intergovernmental agreement with Clarkamas County Department of Transportation and Development. And for the staff report, Nancy Crashour, our Public Works Director and City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This is the intergovernmental agreement with Clarkamas County Department of Transportation and Development for the Holcomb Boulevard Pedestrian Improvement Project. As you know, in the past, the county and the city have partnered on not only developing the Holcomb Boulevard Pedestrian Enhancement Plan itself and adopting that into our comprehensive several years, comprehensive plan several years ago, but also in establishing the scope of work, funding, and implementation of the plan for Phase 1 construction project. The IGA that the city commission approved in May 2008 included references to community development block grant funds that had been applied for in previous years. And throughout the project, an initial work scope, initial project scope and budget had been established for the project, and that's what the original intergovernmental agreement was based on. As we got further into the design of the, and that was based on certain assumptions, and... and as we got further into the actual design of the project after that IGA was signed, the project team, who was the county, they actually did the design of the project and developed the construction documents, and the city, and then, of course, the county Community Development Department Division, they, keep in mind that these were federal funds, the community development block grant funds are federal funds, and so the assumptions that the county had made for stormwater detention were based on the city and the county's standards, and as they worked into the project and was meeting with the community development folks and National Ocean and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA Fisheries, they learned that with the federal funding, the stormwater detention requirements were much more strenuous, or more rigorous than the cities and the counties. That is, the city and the county had, were required to detain and treat water from the project, any new impervious area in the project area, which we counted as the new sidewalks, and a little bit of widening of Holcomb Boulevard for the bike lanes. And the federal requirements were such that we were going to have to treat and detain water from the entire project area, which included all of Holcomb Road between Front and School. So that was, that caused quite a bit of a hurdle for this project, where we had a set budget, and we really were hoping to get to construction this summer, and to go through the processes for that kind of a review, we're going to cause time delays and funding increases to the point where we would be going over our original target budget. The thing that was probably the most costly from these requirements standpoint would be purchasing a property to build a detention pond, and going through the right-of-way acquisition, property acquisition process for that. So the project team at that time decided that because of the significant delays, the significant cost increases, and at that time, they thought escalating project costs, they elected to eliminate the CDBG funds from the project and continue to construct the project with solely with Clackamas County and city funds. And the intergovernmental agreement has thus been revised, and the city attorney's office has reviewed it. And what I did was I included a copy of the revised intergovernmental agreement, and then I also included a copy of what we were hoping to show, a comparative between what is the old intergovernmental agreement and what is the new one. And it gets kind of hard to, there's a lot of crossouts and add-ons, but that, I was trying to make that so you would understand, could see what was eliminated and what was added.
I absolutely appreciate that.
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions, Nancy, with this revised IGA, or do you have a motion?
I move to approve the revised intergovernmental agreement of Clackamas County Department of Transportation Development concerning the Clackamas County, concerning the Holcomb Boulevard Pedestrian Improvement Project.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. There is a further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Neely?
We polled seven, the, it's going to come back to us in the near future, do you know?
Yes, we're hoping to have a resolution of the concerns for that by your next meeting.
Okay. I did request an overall visual map, you know, we have the pieces there, but I couldn't get my hands around it.
Right. In fact, it's fairly simple to just explain in words. We're adding a sidewalk to the, would be the north side of Holcomb Boulevard between Front and Holcomb School, and we're adding bike lanes on both sides, so that'll require a little bit of asphalt widening. And then there are about four or five stormwater swales on the south side of Holcomb Boulevard that will be made, they'll be enlarged and enhanced with vegetation and the proper kind of materials and designed to provide for detention and water quality treatment, much in keeping with the adopted Holcomb Boulevard plan, which is a community-based corridor plan.
Okay, thank you. That's a request for a break. How about a five-minute break?
Twenty-eight fifteen.
Remove an offset intersection. Based on the size of the subdivision, we worked with the applicant and came up with a developer's agreement to reimburse for some of the oversizing of Part Lo Road that would occur across their frontage with the relocation of that street. As part of that developer's agreement, we're requesting that the development agreement rights be changed from Modena Homes to Columbia River Bank at this time, as part of that agreement. And in your packet, I did give you an assignment of contract rights that was not signed by Modena Homes, North Columbia River Bank, and I would like to enter that into the record tonight, and I do have copies for that, if you'd like to, if I can hand those out real quick.
Okay, thank you.
So, pretty straightforward, just changing who the beneficiary is on the assignment of contracts, as I stated, from Modena to the Columbia River Bank. The developer's agreement is still in place. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions? This is fairly straightforward, I mean, there's not...
The only thing that's changing is Modena to...
But it's a statute of requirement that we have to approve, changing of the...
Yes, because it's an ordinance and because it's a development agreement, an amendment that has to be approved as well.
Okay, okay. May I have a motion then for, on this reassignment?
I move the assignment of the contract rights for Rachel State's Development Agreement for Modena to Meme to Homes to Columbia River Bank.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there any other comment?
It sounded like you had something to say.
Oh, I was just going to say, there was a representative from the bank here, if you had any questions that I could not answer.
Oh, okay.
That's all I had.
Yeah, okay. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero. Now we'll go, thank you. And now we'll go back to our regularly scheduled agenda, and we'll take 7C, supplemental agreement number four to the personal services agreement on the Warner-Milney Road-Molalla Avenue intersection realignment and the Beaver Creek Road-Molalla Avenue intersection right turn lane improvement projects. I believe separating those, that one project into two.
That's correct, thank you, Mayor. We're asking you tonight to authorize an amendment to the Wallace Engineering Contract of about $64,000 to do exactly as you said, because we're not running two projects together in one set of contract documents by the city, because we got the ARRA funding for Warner-Milney, we've had to separate that off, and there's a whole new set of requirements and rules that we need to follow to make sure we're following with the ARRA rules that were established by Congress and FHWA. So we'll be continuing moving ahead with final design on the Beaver Creek Road-Molalla Improvement, that is adding a right turn lane to Beaver Creek Road, the eastbound leg of that intersection, and that means that it does take more work and cost more money, but the net, we're still doing fine on our net gain, because we have $900,000 that we got for the Warner-Milney Project.
And what has become clear once again is that when we do federal projects, they take more work.
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Because it puts more people to work.
Are there any further questions or comments on this one, or a motion, please? Go and all speak.
I'll move supplemental agreement number two to personal service agreement. One, Warner-Milney Road-Molalla Avenue Intersection Realignment and Utility Replacement, and secondly, Beaver Road-Molalla Avenue Intersection Right Turn Lane Improvement Projects.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Seeing no further discussion, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero. The next is an ordinance, amending the, our municipal code, chapter 10.36.010, to address community caretaking and impound of vehicles, which we've talked about in the past. And I have Lieutenant Lisa Nunes.
Over here. Great, hey. Wow, she was self-assessing.
Woo, you just flew over there.
Quick.
Great, for the staff report, thank you.
The ordinance 09-1004 is the ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending Oregon City Municipal Code 10.36.010 to address community caretaking and impoundment of vehicles. Staff recommends that the City Commission approve the first reading of ordinance 09-1004 to amend City of Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 10.36.010, to address community caretaking and impoundment of vehicles. Currently, the code authorized law enforcement to impound vehicles in certain circumstances, such as driver's licenses are suspended, people were intoxicated, no insurance on the vehicle. And these impoundments originally were for community caretaking, but now case law has come into effect that we need to go a little bit farther when it comes to community caretaking. Community caretaking should be that if you stop a car, the driver's suspended, but the passenger has a valid driver's license, and the car is insured, that we should be allowing passengers to drive the vehicle away. This all comes from a case law that occurred in Cornelius, Oregon. So we're asking to change the code to address our community caretaking.
Okay, any questions about this? All right, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 09-1004 to amend the City of Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 10 dot 36 dot 010, to address community caretaking and impoundment of vehicles.
And a second. Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Nocita for the first reading. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, this is ordinance 09-1004, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending OCMC 10.36.010 to address community caretaking, impoundment of vehicles.
Thank you. And I think we read that four times. That was an interesting, hopefully the public memorized that. Nancy, may we have the vote, please?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero.
How many times will it be read by the second reading?
It will be a lot. Hopefully, we won't have to repeat it so many times.
You're going to play it on tape.
Okay. Next is Resolution 9-21, which is an amendment to our natural hazard mitigation plan that we have with Clackamas County. And I think this is Nancy Crashour again.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is one of those projects that probably nobody knows about until we publish the document, except for all the people that worked on it. We had a tremendous committee that spent quite many, many hours doing this amendment or addendum to our original natural hazards mitigation plan, which I think Commissioner Neely, you might remember having, that was done about 10 or 12 years ago. And while these...
That's when we had a fire department.
That's right, you're correct. It was Mr. French did that report. But surely, I think Oregon City was one of the first to adopt a natural hazards mitigation plan in the country, and shortly after we adopted it, FEMA changed some of the requirements. So we found out soon after that, the good news is was after we had gotten our pre-disaster mitigation money from FEMA for our Mountain View Reservoir seismic retrofit, but shortly after that, we were told we needed to amend our natural hazards mitigation plan to meet the new FEMA requirements. And Clackamas County has been a tremendous help to us in doing this. They completed their plan, and then Oregon City, along with many other cities, have kind of gone on the coattails of the county's plan, adding our own specific information, all of our maps, but definitely with their help. As a matter of fact, the Oregon Partnership for Disaster Resilience from University of Oregon's Community Service Center, they have had interns that have been working with the county that have really reached out, and the woman that helped us, we couldn't have done it without her, because she kept us all on track, because we were, we had a number of different people from the community involved. And what it does, and I'm going to keep this fairly brief, but I think since it takes so much time and energy and work to put these together, at least it deserves a little explanation, that you, the people from different entities, including neighborhoods, school district, county, city, emergency services, the fire department, all were involved in putting this together. Our GIS department played a huge role in putting all these maps together for us, and what we do is we do a fairly elaborate community profile, talk about the citizens, population, demographics, geography, housing, land use, et cetera, and then we go ahead and identify all the natural hazards, and, you know, in Oregon City, we do have quite a few. We don't have hurricanes, but we have just about everything else.
October 12th, storm of...
Was close to a hurricane.
Well, no, it had hurricane velocity winds.
Yeah.
They peaked at 105 miles an hour.
And that would be under severe storm, wind, and water, which we looked at those kinds of things, so...
It was from a low-pressure area that was associated with Typhoon Fritta.
Oh, there you go.
Ooh, excellent from our statistician.
Yes.
I wasn't a statistician at the time, I was just a dumb biologist.
Hey, watch what you say about biologists. There may be one in the room. Anyway, then what we do is we look at each of those hazards. For Oregon City, there's flooding, obviously, there's landslide, wildfire, severe storm, wind, and water, earthquake, and volcanic eruption. And we look at those and identify what kind of hazards can be involved, how serious could they be, and more importantly, what kind of mitigation strategy should we have in place to reduce the hazard of each of those incidents. And we then go through and prioritize based on what can, how big the population could be affected, how much the incident could cost, a whole series of ways to prioritize the mitigation for these hazards, and then we come up with a plan. And many of these things that we are already working on, will continue to work on, and one of the requirements of the FEMA plan is that we update it regularly. So we will be bringing these people, this same committee or their representatives back together again to continue working on the plan and updating it as the years go by. So this is an ongoing task we have, and it's one other thing that your staff and community volunteers are working on. So we're really hoping that you will adopt this resolution.
That's very comprehensive and interesting reading. I found it fascinating. May, questions? Commissioner Smith?
In looking at the Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee Representatives, it gives a list of everyone that was involved in 2003 and 2008, and then on page seven, where it's talking about November 5th, it says, "The group also discussed potential members to add to the HMPC," and I'm curious as to if there was additions and what they were.
I think that, I'm not absolutely positive about this, and I can certainly follow up in that with the notes from Laurel, but from what I recall is that we determined that we were not going to add any more members, because we were already having enough trouble getting people to attend the meetings.
Okay. The reason I ask, and I feel like I'm in, it's like deja vu, because I feel the same way I felt when I read the parking study. There's not one mention of the police department. There was, it doesn't look like there was any representation from the police department, and that concerns me. Every other, every other department in the city, including the fire department, was a part of this and not the police station. And I know firsthand by attending, or experiencing a ride-along in 1996. I went on a ride-along with my father in 1996 on the night that the city slowly disappeared to the water of the Clackamas and the Willamette Rivers, and it was one of the most amazing experiences of my life, because it was amazing. because it, it was amazing because everyone pretty much in Oregon City was asleep as that water came up. And to be there all night, um, watching it and seeing how the city reacted to it, um, was incredible. And I, I, I've, I cannot understand how. Um, I mean, with the parking study, that's, that was pretty shocking that the police department wasn't involved. But this is huge. So I don't necessarily think, I mean, it, unless I know that, and unfortunately, the chief's not here, but have the, has the police department looked into this? They know what we're approving? Because I don't know that I would want to approve it without the police department at least looking at it.
Well, I would have to defer to Lieutenant Nunes here, but I believe that part of the role of Clackamas Fire District One is in this kind of hazard mitigation planning. And this is not our emergency response plan whatsoever. This is to identify hazards and to work on mitigation and, um, more of a planning document. But Lieutenant, do you want to add anything?
Somehow we got, somehow when that mitigation happened, we kind of got separated. Uh, because we have our own, what we call a coup plan and, and emergency plan on that side. And I think sometimes it might be just a little lack of communication to get us involved. And I think sometimes we end up doing our own thing. So I think somehow we got separated. Because I do do emergency management all the time.
And this is more hazards mitigation. It's, I mean, it's similarities, but they're different.
I know, but every, every single department in the city was part of it.
I, I, I would like to toss out an idea.
Commissioner Nocita?
I'd like to toss out an idea, um, that we continue this item and request a police department review and memorandum and presentation, um, at the next meeting.
Second.
You don't need to...
It wasn't a motion, it was a proposal.
Oh, I, well, why wasn't it?
It does maybe.
Uh, I, I, I mean, I, I, I just, I mean, I, I'm, I looked at it, it, and, and, you know, it, I definitely support, I just, it, I just feel, it just feels odd that, um, there's, there was no input from the police department, and we don't even know because the police chief, Sarah P, has seen it. And, and I, I, I can't, I don't, I can't support it unless I know that the police department says, yeah, yeah, we think this is good.
Is there any problem with holding it over for...
No, thanks.
Okay. Let's do so then.
I'd like to just, uh...
You're going to do it?
Yeah, I'm going to add something. It's on page seventy-one.
All right.
Uh, talking about UGAMI releasing a report and indicating various structures that were at high, very high risk in Oregon City. It lists schools and Willamette Falls Hospital. I, I presume, because so many schools are listed, I presume that they evaluated schools. That is, schools must have been a facility they probably had looked at for some reason.
We listed, um, all the schools and, um, the, one of the reasons why the air risk tie is particularly is because of all the kids in them. And then they also, um, some of them are relied on for, uh, disaster relief, if you want to turn one into a, a relief place. So we want to make sure that we're considering them as all at high risk so we can do as much mitigation as possible so that we can have as many available for public use in, as needed.
Well, I would, I'm, I'm not going to hold up this piece, but what I would like to take a look at, in fact, are some of our city structures, specifically the Pioneer Community Center. Not as part of this.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Pioneer Community Center.
Well, we also, this is a living document, so we'll be updating it. We can look at those.
So that, that facility is one that can, uh, receive lots of members from the community. I assume whatever library we would have, would have enough floor space. Maybe not because of all the books and bookcases, but...
There's also other things they look for, like having kitchens and having, um, that part, I'm not as, as much of an expert. But I know they look for more than just a building. Pioneer, of course, has a kitchen.
Uh, for a very different reason. I'd like to hook our, uh, fire stations and police stations, because we don't want, we don't want those facilities falling in on the people that are going to come out and provide the needed emergency services.
It, it's actually a little scary to see Willamette Falls Hospital had a high risk of collapse.
Yes, 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 yes.
Very scary.
Okay, any other things to add to what you want to hear next time?
We should have a motion.
Why, motion breaking?
To hold over.
I would move to continue this agenda item and request from the police department a review and a presentation, both in memorandum and during the, um, the subsequent agenda item on this proposed hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith to hold up for this item. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next is the public utility, utility easement water line at Hilltop Fire Station. And Nancy, I assume this is also you.
Yes, and, um, I probably have to apologize for my staff. I believe these probably would normally be under the consent agenda.
Worried about that.
And we are all getting more used to the new, um, uh, the new civic web way we turn in our reports. So Nancy, I'll be keeping a better eye on those. Okay. Um, this is a simple water line easement at the Hilltop Fire Station. We've worked with the fire department to, um, agree on a price of no, of a dollar, and, um, it's so that we can complete our water line project and have looping in that area, which provides for much higher water, better water quality for that service area.
Okay. A little bit of just, um, routine business. May I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Up the vote, please, Nancy.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. And another one that's fairly routine is a public utility easement for the sidewalk at Holcomb. Nancy, any comments?
I don't have any additional comments on that. This is for the Holcomb Boulevard project.
Okay. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Smith?
Um, before we make a motion, I will abstain because I'm employee of the school district, and I will just, um, not vote on this.
Well, I move to authorize the mayor and the city recorder to execute a temporary improvement of construction easement documents for the Oregon City School District for the Holcomb Boulevard pedestrian improvement project. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. Further comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Abstain.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three zero with one abstention. And that concludes our business agenda. Um, now for the consent agenda, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita on the consent agenda. The vote, please, Nancy.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. And lastly, under communications, first, we'll start with those city managers.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, need to talk to you about, uh, September work session, uh, joint work session with the planning commission, uh, the judge's evaluation, and the city manager's evaluation. Uh, so, at least for the first three items, let me have you jot down a few dates here, because we, it's just trying to find where we can do these. The council chambers are available on the following dates: August twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and the thirty-first, and September the first. Uh, we can hold a work session with the planning commission, uh, before their meetings. Uh, that's on August twenty-fourth, September fourteenth, and September the twenty-eighth. You could also have the judge's evaluation in one of the conference rooms. So with that, first of all, September work session. When do we want to hold that?
Well, wait, the judge's evaluation, I believe we've set for September third.
If, uh, I just, if everybody has, I know there's been discussion, I don't know if we've all come to that.
Yes, we have.
Okay, and I'll be getting you some information, uh, to go with that packet that could be rather light this time, but, uh, things going pretty well there.
Correct.
Uh, so September third for the judge's session, and we'll have to do that in a conference room. Okay, we can do that. Uh, the September work session.
Uh, I was hoping we could do it the same night. We could actually even meet at Pioneer. We need a room.
We could do that.
What?
Nope, we're going to get to that one.
The what? Oh.
And rural.
And rural.
Well, they're only, I think that's, uh, one of the few available dates that we have. That, which is why it was selected as possibly both.
We can do that, and we'll see if we can get that into Pioneer Center.
Yeah, if we do a four thirty...
So we're talking about Sept- September third, you want?
Third, which is Thursday.
It, it can, it cannot be in the chambers. We'll have to do it offsite somewhere.
If it's on that one, it won't work.
Oh, it won't for reserves. Uh, that's right. I remember that.
So does that confuse the judge's evaluation as well?
No.
No.
No, he's not involved in that.
Okay.
You're not applying for a judge's position, are you?
Okay, I think, uh, you've gone on the first also, September first?
First, I will not be here.
Okay, see, that's, uh, just, okay, the seventh, I think, is the only other possibility, which is planning commission, which we can meet early for them. Isn't that planning? Or it might be the first.
September fourteenth.
It's Monday.
September seventh is, I believe, Labor Day.
Oh, seventh is Labor Day. Yeah, okay.
But we can meet then.
Aren't you gone on the fourteenth?
I'm gone.
I'll probably be.
Yeah, that's, uh, are there any more dates there? That's about the eighth. Oh, yeah, the eighth, yeah, eighth was already scheduled.
And I did notice the county has a meeting scheduled on urban rural reserves. What day is that?
That's the eighth.
That's the eighth, so you probably need to have that work session prior to the eighth.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Well, that's a public hearing.
Yeah, it's just a public hearing. I'm, yeah.
I will not be here on the eighth.
Yeah, I know. Okay, we don't have any, we don't have any days. Do you are going the whole week at the thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we exhausted all the dates, except the eleventh, September eleventh, but that's, um...
What day of the week is that?
It's a Friday. That's an opening of the Green Line. There's a bunch of festivities, but I...
Well, we can hold, we can hold it in Portland State, find a room there.
Sure, there you go.
All, all go on the Green Line.
Yeah, I think Friday night's probably not a great, I mean, I guess it's the only one we have. But that's the only one that I, well, let's see, and that's, that's after the eighth.
I don't know if the eighth is that important.
You know, I don't think so either.
But, yeah, I...
They're not going to make their decision.
No.
Uh, the fifteenth?
Now, you have a planning commission on the fourteenth. Could you meet prior to that? Are you gone?
I'm not saying date.
Yeah.
Fourteenth?
Um, on, on the fourteenth? If it could be at seven, because I'm entertaining all the mayors of the region at Weatherford's.
Invite them along.
Wait, when is it, when does the planning commission start?
I guess I, I mean, I...
Seven, our work session would be before seven.
What?
Work session would be before, before seven.
I know, but the meet, dinner's at six.
You can't do that.
What's your, what's, what's your husband for?
He's not a mayor. He won't be there.
Oh, well.
Um, I mean, if that's the only time we can meet...
We could meet at seven.
What about the twenty-eighth? Do you have a planning commission meeting on twenty-eighth?
I'm, I'm gone. Twenty-eighth of what month?
September.
I'm gone.
Gone.
I'm gone. I've gone through October fifth.
Okay. I give up.
I know. So the fifteenth was out?
What was the fifteenth?
The fifteenth. It's Tuesday, the fifteenth, or the day after the planning commission meeting. Tuesday, the fifteenth. Are you gone, Larry?
Oh, yeah, but you guys can do that without me.
We could meet without Larry.
The only, the only thing that might happen is they schedule a pack urban...
Yeah, but you're going to...
I'm going to miss one of those anyway.
Well, should we technically put down September fourteenth?
Okay, we'll have to find a site off.
I, I would go ahead and do it September fourteenth, then we do it in the afternoon. Like four.
Yeah, planning commissioners probably can't, but can they?
Aye.
That's tough for them.
So, okay. No, that's, that's good. Let's do it on the fourteenth.
Working around my dinner, or do you want me to cancel?
Oh, no, I mean, no, fifteen. What is fifteen?
Fifteenth is clear for, I didn't hear any...
Only thing, we'll probably have to schedule it offsite. I'm not seeing a date that the chambers are available, so.
We did it.
What time? Seven fifteen?
And the fifteenth is...
We can do it at five.
Five thirty.
What's the earliest planning commission can...
Six or five.
Six for, okay. All right, six PM. That's the PC and the OC, CC.
May I suggest the sixteenth, just before the regular meeting?
That's urban renewal, isn't it?
Maybe urban renewal.
Would it take long? We could have a, a joint work session also, perhaps?
I think it'll be a while.
Yeah, I think that's tough.
Unfortunately.
So are we okay with that, then?
If ducks is...
What did you said?
Hmm.
Well, hopefully it won't be very long, but, um, we've reviewed all these, we've reviewed all these issues many times.
I'm just trying to stay in the chambers if possible.
Yeah, I know, I know, I understand. Um...
So it...
Well, it's, okay, we're all, we all are coming for city council on the sixteenth. If there's no urban renewal, or the business is light, then set it for the sixteenth. Because we, if we could do it...
And if business is heavy and we have an urban renewal, move it to the fifteenth.
Then if the fifteenth seems to be open.
And then you have work session on the third with the judge's thing on the, uh, third?
Judge's thing only, yeah.
Yeah, judge's thing only.
Judge's thing only.
Yeah, judge's evaluation.
September work session then is...
Oh, oh, that is the work, that is the work session also, yeah.
We just roll that to October.
We could have, why can't we have the work session on the third?
Yeah, well, that's, uh, that's what we ha, we do, except for this one item, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, separating out, separating out the urban reserve thing.
It's, and work session, right.
Yeah.
So are we saying we're having a, a work session on September third?
Yeah, and we'll not deal with the urban reserves.
No, it'll be everything else.
It will just be a standard work session?
Yes. It's our normal one. So the one on the eighth is not, no longer there.
They're all normal work sessions.
Yeah, right. We don't do normal.
September third at what time?
It will be...
Five thirty.
I will let, I will let you know, because it, I think it's going to be at four thirty for the evaluation. I'll let you know when, after I confirm with the judge.
With the work session for five thirty?
Okay. Now, I would like to raise, as far as the September third work session, since it's going to be a regular work session, not focusing on urban reserves, I think this is going to be the last time we would be able to invite Mr. Sullivan to the work session. And I would like to invite him, that's to that work session, to discuss this issue of those comp plan policies. You're going to go on nine months?
Fourth of July, two thousand and ten.
Then this is our chance.
Okay, let's let them work that out. That works. That's great. I think that's up to Ed and the city manager. Okay. Do we have all those dates then?
Ed, can't you participate in a telephone conference?
We'll, we'll confirm everything. Larry, you have more. You have more dates.
Have more dates?
Yes. Do you have everything you need?
The only other one is you have a packet of information in regards to city manager evaluation. Uh, again, given kind of the schedule here, is, I think you're probably looking at that in, ideally be...
November.
November.
November. We could do it, uh, before the first or the, of the third meeting, you know, or the, yeah, the first meeting in November or the second meeting in November. Do you want to get back to us on which the date would be best, or free us from urban renewal?
Yeah, because it really depends what happened with the next couple of meetings there.
Okay. September fourth for eighteen.
You only had one more day to remind us of something.
Tomorrow is the wastewater one oh one.
Yes.
And that's at five thirty.
Five thirty.
At the, uh, Public Service Building, which is across the way.
I thought it was at six.
Does anybody go?
Is it six?
It's a five thirty.
Is it? Okay. Well, and, it's also the evening when the Attorney General is going to be in town to talk about, to have a public hearing on Willamette Falls Hospital-Providence merger. So I'm obligated there, so I will come to one oh one after, so.
So when are, when are you going, when are you going to take one oh one, one oh one A?
I think I've had one oh one, but who is going to one oh one? Is everybody good? Good. I'm glad. I think that's important. Okay. You may continue with your report, sir.
That concludes my report.
Okay. Then we'll move into commissioner liaison reports. Oh, first of all, I have an appointment of Nancy Young to the Clackamas Cable Access Board for a term beginning today and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and ten. And then, uh, let's have commissioner reports. Who has one this evening? Commissioner Nocita?
Um, I don't have a liaison report, but, um, there were some, um, items that I wanted I don't have a liaison report, but there were some items that I wanted on the agenda tonight that weren't put on the agenda, so I want to bring them up in my Commissioner First, I want to raise the idea of, or make up the proposal to refer some items to the Citizens' Involvement Council for their review and comment to us. The first is the Clackamas Heritage Partners Report, and the second is the role of the Economic Development Coordinator.
No problems with that? Anyone else? Okay, let's do it.
Okay. How, have we got a formal process yet for making these referrals?
No.
Or just...
Just do it.
Just, just the head nod?
Sure.
Okay. The second, I would like a more formal vote on this, and this is, I sent this out in an email today, and that, to refresh folks' memory, back in my first month or so of being on the commission, Commissioner Neely had raised a good point, I thought, at where it comes to city-owned land, the city commission should, just as a matter of course, review major land use decisions made by the planning commission. And we had discussed with the city attorney, the authority, I think, which was in 227-180.
Gotcha.
And I would like to actually move that we call up the, the final decision of the planning commission on the Public Works Master Plan that was issued August 10th for our review. I'm kind of anticipating that the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association will probably appeal that anyway. I've not heard either way, but I certainly, I am in that neighborhood and I have heard some, some talk of that, but I...
May I interrupt there because if it comes to us on appeal, it would be inappropriate for us to...
Well, it's two things.
Okay.
If you, if you have, first of all, the calling up is really your call, really, and the only thing that differs a call-up from an appeal is that you don't have to have grounds, you just look at it generally. If there's an appeal, I recommend that the motion, whatever you make, and if it's successful, combine any appeal that may be filed along with the call-up.
So we, we could really combine.
You can have both as a consolidated proceeding.
Yeah, and that's the way I envisioned it. The other thing I wanted to point out was...
On this topic?
On this topic was, I did want, I don't know what issues were raised before the planning commission, I haven't read, you know, the findings and decision, but I, as part of our call-up, I would want to invite the public to comment on any issue, not just any issue that was raised below, because I want to expand, you know, public participation on something like this as broad as possible. So I'm going to move that the city commission call up pursuant to our authority of NORS 227-180, the August 10th final approval of the Morgan City Public Works Master Plan.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nacita, second by Commissioner Neely. Is there further comment or discussion?
I'll have a question of our attorney. If, if an appeal comes to us at the same time we're having, I'll call it our own evaluation. What is this, what's the situation if the appellant wants to take their case to a higher authority, should we not support the appeal? Can they still, can they bring up any of the...
If they have their independent appeal, they can take it up.
But can they include other things that we brought up that are in fact not...
If they're going to a de novo hearing, yes.
Okay.
Okay, may I bring up something also that the Neighborhood Association has brought up, and that is, whose attorney are you?
I'm the city's attorney.
Okay, does that mean that a Neighborhood Association can seek your advice?
They can seek advice through you.
If we request...
If you request it, but I'm not the public's attorney.
You're not the public's...
I'm the city's attorney.
Okay. So you work for us and not particular city, city entities?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four zero.
I just want to say that I think it is a, a good process on any city-owned land because we're the owner. And my, my concern, on the other hand, is you've got the, the owner looking at conditions, but I guess that's not a problem, so.
Likely come to us one way or the other. Okay.
That completes mine.
Okay, anyone else? I have a few things. We've completed the parking meetings and, so I assume, Larry, I assume you're going to be giving us a report in the next several meetings on parking, since we've completed those round of stakeholder meetings. Is that true? Okay, I just want to let you know that.
Might I just make a point?
Yes.
I guess we can call it up at any time, I guess there is not even a time limit from what I understood from the attorney whilst looking at those things.
Which things? Parkings?
No, no, evaluate, no, I'm coming back to the motion we just made, I'm sorry.
Okay, you want to wait till the end or...
Well, let's wait to get the city attorney's attention on this.
Right, yeah. Okay, now, let's go.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I was slow in getting this out, but when we make such a request, we probably should give some kind of indication when we want that to come before us and give them, give, give our planning staff enough time to prepare the material, and I don't know how much time that is. You say the normal, the normal requirements aren't there, I mean, we can look at it.
The normal requirements that you have, and some of you may disagree with this, is that you have to have raised an issue below and you have to preserve that issue as it goes before the commission, and usually the record is closed. And what you're asking for is that the issues, not the record, the issues can be raised that are, nobody might have raised below.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's what you have before you when you call something up.
I just wanted to...
I think, I think, Commissioner, I think...
Commissioner Nacita?
I think Commissioner Neely's point was just to the schedule of this hearing.
Yeah.
Which I didn't, I did not, I think, set.
You should probably set it for a date certain, you don't have 120-day problem, obviously, because you have the...
That's what I meant.
That's your, where it's going with the planning, is that what you're hearing, Tony?
Yeah, so if, if we do receive an appeal, we'll receive it in the next couple of days. We're required to notice a minimum of 14 days. That pretty much puts us at either the second hearing in September or the first meeting in October. Realistically, probably the first meeting in October would allow enough time to get the materials prepared. The, the second meeting in September is very tight.
Right.
Just depending on when we get that appeal, so hit it.
Now, should we make another motion as to a, a specific date or...
Now, you, you'd better wait until you actually get the appeal.
Yeah, because I think October, for, you know, the first meeting in October is, would be my preference.
I'll miss you.
Yeah.
We'll miss you too, Ed.
Yeah. Okay, a couple of things then to continue my report. C4, the Clackamas County Coordinating Commission is having a retreat Thursday, September 24th, from 1:00 PM Thursday to 3:00 PM Friday, the 25th, and I, I know Commissioner West has expressed interest in going, we can send two delegates, and it would be good to do that. Is there another...
This is to what?
The C4 retreat, there's an annual retreat where...
And this is the one you said is simultaneous to the Vancouver one?
Yes. Yes. I, I would recommend that, since they are together.
What is, what is it, what are the dates?
It's September 24th and it's 1:00 PM Thursday, September 24th to 3:00 PM Friday, September 25th. They'll be talking about urban rural reserves, planning for the future.
Yeah, I'd like to be on it.
Okay. Send Doug. I have Nancy...
You know where it's going to be?
Yes, I think it's the Camby Conference Center where it was last, no, Camp Colton, Camp Colton, where it was last time.
My, old camp.
Yeah, okay, and then the next trip that Commissioner Nacita alluded to, I believe, is being scheduled for the same time period, Thursday, September 24th through Sunday night, must be the 28th or something, as a trip to Vancouver, B.C., particularly to look at urban, urban planning, urban design, development, that it would be very well orchestrated. I understand the trip is quite, quite fabulous, Metro will be leading it, and, oh, the two guys, two speakers whom I've heard.
Patrick Condon.
Con, yeah, Patrick Condon and Gordon, the other one. Anyway, they're, one of their, they're experts on corridors and centers, so, and they're both quite skilled, I believe they, they're both university professors from the Vancouver area, so.
What are the dates, what are the dates on that?
That's the 20th, they leave Thursday, the 24th, and get home Sunday evening, and we'll, I think Counselor Robert Liberty is organizing that. Okay, next, the, you'll, you'll hear at wastewater 101 tomorrow night that a special task force has been put together to deal with the Kellogg plant, and we've been asked to submit three names to be on that committee, each jurisdiction has, and we were supposed to send an elected, a citizen and a staff person, and so we're sending, I believe Nancy Crashour, Doug Neely,